You're okay? Yep, and um, if you go upstairs. We have two people, and I'm gonna try to time this and I'm gonna try to get it all. Cause Sue will not be here. No, nope, nope, we're gonna be fine. Yep. Got my mic on so y'all can check me out. Check, 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 check. I don't know, Jason, are you back there? Can you guys hear me okay? Maybe not.
Thank you so much, and I'm about to make a move.
Yeah, I got you in the movie there. Yeah, I think you were talking about.
I just had, after I left, back there going, other people reaching out, like, what about us? And I was like, I understand it's the whole thing, but I just.
You guys hear me back there, okay, Jason? It's not Jason, never mind. Okay, I wanna make sure. We're gonna go here in just a minute, I gotta wait for the superintendent. Hi, Jody. Hi, Andrew. We're gonna be a small but mighty group tonight. Pardon me? I can't hear you. Uh, we're just waiting on Jane. Yes, we um, we have two that are out tonight. Sorry. It's summer, thank you, great to meet you.
Pleasure.
This won't be the last time we chat, I'm sure. She is not, she's uh, on vacation. So we got two, as we said, we're gonna be small but mighty, and nobody likes me on this side except Jessie. So, thank you. Awesome.
I can hold this up over here.
Yeah, exactly. You guys know how to turn your monitors on and everything, I'm gonna leave that to you yourself, because I can't get mine.
Mine's not on either.
Oh, there it went, finally, so, okay. It says no s- it says no s- mine says no signal, so that's.
Mine does too. I got a piece of paper, I'm good.
Do they just start? Sometimes I use them to. We like to. There you go. Did you picture Jessie is right on the top? There you go. Alright. That's okay. It's, it's, it's a Monday and it's August, so I don't have my, here it is, over here. Everybody, alright. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, absolutely. Alright, everybody got their monitors going and we are, we're a few down tonight, but we're gonna get through everything, and if I ask somebody to repeat who first and seconded it, it's just so that I can keep my notes straight, so. The next item on our agenda then is the mission statement, and that is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda tonight is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask that if you have something to address the board with, that you come forward and state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Um, when you get to thirty seconds remaining, I will hold up a yellow card, and when you've hit your three-minute limit, I will hold up a red card and ask that you please conclude your comments at that time. And I would ask that you be respectful, and that we cannot discuss personnel items, those are private. We will also do what we can to address issues that come forward or to clarify, but this is generally not a back and forth, as we are not taking care of items that are not on our agenda, that are off of our agenda tonight with comments. So, with that, I would open it up to anyone who wishes to address the board, again, please come forward and state your name and address, and I'll start the timer. Maybe we don't have anybody. We had a couple people register, so I just wanted to, now that I said all that. Yay, people, I'm so great, so, okay. So we'll move on then to our consent agenda, and this evening it consists of six items, the minutes of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting, and the July twentieth, twenty twenty-one special board meeting, this is item A. Personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item B. The bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings, which is item C. The Iowa voluntary preschool contracts, which are item D. The Tri-County Child and Family Development Council Incorporated Contract Service Agreement, which is item E. And the Project Lead the Way Exploratory Kit Purchase, which is item F. So I would entertain a motion to place those items on the table, please. Thank you, Jessie, and a second. Thank you, Aster. Um, and are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
B and F.
B and F, alright.
And E, echo.
And E, echo, okay. So all those in favor of approving items A, C, and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item B, which is on page five, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items listed. So, thanks, Jessie. And it's okay, I know, we're all like, what? And then a second?
Second.
Thank Jessie, and discussion.
So, um, hi, Kingsley. Just a couple questions, so the um, the middle school athletic and activities coordinator, is that a new position completely?
That is correct, that's a new position.
Okay, so how does that fit in then with um, Dan's position?
Great, so Dan is the direct supervisor for that position, and that position we are looking at as we're funding to fund for that position, particularly around how we can get our students better engaged at the middle school level, not only with academics, and so this is to support the academic advisors that the board knows, that Dan and the grant, things along those lines. But also, it's a placeholder for an open administrator position at Carver, to make sure that they're running and going, but also to support the other A.D.s, just to make sure we have refs on time for games, make sure that games are scheduling, scheduled as they're supposed to be scheduling, and then also to really support Dan in ensuring that our students have at least one, we haven't developed um, all the criteria yet, because we wanted to get some feedback from some community groups and others around, how many programs, how many camps, how many things can we have on a regular basis that this particular person can support? So we really wanna make sure our students are engaged, because we know from the research that if students are busy extracurricular activities, they're more likely to not only attend school, but you know, be involved in school more, and so that's really where this position came from, especially as we saw such a heightened drop-off in relation to COVID um, and participation across the board.
What's it looking like this year? Do you know, has anyone talked about it? Cause I know a lot of camps have started.
I don't know yet, I know we're, we're concerned enough to where we're putting together some focus groups, or a focus group, I should say, in regards to, you know, band and some other places where we just had that drop-off, where people typically had had an opportunity to go out and participate, but with some of the challenges to COVID last year, they didn't get that opportunity, so Dan, and again with this individual as well, will really kind of sponsor that charge and make sure that we get people involved.
So Dan, he's not just the high school coordinator, correct?
He's K twelve, correct.
Okay, so this is just to help focus on middle school?
That's correct.
Okay.
Will this position be housed at Carver or just at Carver?
It will initially be housed at Carver, that's correct. So it will initially be housed at Carver, because we do have an open A.D. position there, so we wanted to make sure that, now this is not an administrative position, it's an admin support position, but we still wanted to make sure that we had somebody there to ensure that things were going well. I think it also is connected to, we talked a lot about the transitions that are happening at East, and we talked, we talked a lot about the feeder to East, and where are we, what are we doing in that regard? I mean, we haven't talked about it, I shouldn't say, we haven't talked about the board table, but I know that we've had conversations about the feeders at East, and what are we doing in regards to ensuring that our students have a lot of opportunities.
So are we looking for, are we actively looking for athletic director to field at Carver's spot? And if so, when that position is filled, then this new position will be housed.
At the district office, correct.
So we are still actively looking for.
We're not actively looking at it, looking for it right now, we're gonna start the year as is, um, and then we're gonna look, you know, what changes could be made in the future.
But then this position will continue to exist after that?
Correct.
Okay, um, I just wanted another question, um, with a lot of the change of assignments, I saw that we had taken, we pulled quite a bit from Expo for um, some of our virtual stuff, is that, and then we have, we fill those, but do you feel that that's gonna be, that we still have the experience and everything that we need at Expo?
Absolutely, I mean, Principal Williams is a mastermind as far as moving his staff around to make sure that we have the teacher FTE available for our students to be successful. We're still working on some of those plans, and so some of those things have yet to come to fruition, but, um, you know, we talked, we talked actually at the inventory today, and some of those changes, we feel pretty comfortable with.
And those positions, like, virtual's already happening through Expo, wasn't it, for the high school or?
Yeah, parts of the virtual program was happening through Expo, so this is really, this is really not a a shift so much as far as his staff are concerned. It's really a shift of moving the entire um, program for the six through twelve under his direction.
Okay.
So in this middle school position, um, is there a participation goal for extracurriculars?
We will, oh, go ahead, Jane.
If you want, if, I didn't, I was just gonna turn on my microphone, cause I had something to say, but.
Well, no, I was, you may know the goal itself, but that's a part of, you see me cheesing a little bit, because that's a really a part of why we're so excited about this position. You know, you know me well enough, I want a hundred percent participation, and when I talked to Dan today, we have about sixty-eight participation, but again, COVID greatly impacted those numbers, and so, we're not only looking to get, have this person get back to our pre-COVID numbers, but also look at how we can boost it again to eighty, to ninety, to a hundred percent. The other thing I would stay in relation to Dan, and when I'm talking, um, Andrew, I'm talking about Dan Huff. I should say, I keep saying Dan, and you're like, what Dan is this? Um, Dan Huff in particular, we talked about, you know, we're also separating that data out. So athletics is one piece, activities is the one piece, clubs is another piece, and so, you know, right now, we're looking at the goal of just participation in one of those three pieces. Moving forward, we may look at it as far as how does partition, participation look in each of those areas, and what can we do to bolster that, and that's why this position is to really help with the data piece.
That's, I didn't, I didn't see that part, so thank you, so would that like include like our Lego League kids and all that kind of stuff?
And that's what I was gonna say, when I interrupted Kingsley earlier, was that the good thing about this position is I feel like middle school has needed some attention in our, and that's kind of the time when our students are really gearing up to have some of these choices, with whether it's athletics or extracurriculars that are, you know, whether it's drama, a drama team or a Lego League team.
Summer intermarial program too.
Intermarials, exactly, so having somebody that can really focus on that.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I think it's, it's really important to not only meet the previous participation goals, but exceed them now to, cause uh, you know, it's called extracurricular, it seems kinda like it's extra, but it's really not, it's an integral part of our entire education system, so.
And I would just add, before there's any more questions, that this was a part of a conversation we had prior to COVID that we would come back to you with an entire athletic plan. COVID kinda put a stop to that, and we didn't have that conversation, and so this year, um, Dan, um, and his team, um, now probably come before you here in the next couple of months to talk about where are we at, where are we going, what are evaluations looking at, I mean, all those type of things that were important that, again, we wish we'd done next year, but we're trying to get a jumpstart now with the new position and some other things going on.
Well, and I think this participation thing is very big, because as you look in this post-COVID world, we're seeing a lot more of your, from going to high school to college, you know, where they're looking at, what did you do in school versus just what you score on standardized tests? That's becoming bigger and bigger as people went to ACT optional on a lot of admissions and scholarships and things, so, you know, getting these kids to understand that this could impact their, you know, what they do in trying to get into college and stuff is huge, that, you know, you need to be active, better build those resumes for, for yourself when you get ready to apply for things, and have experiences to be able to, you know, build essays upon, that, you know, when you get a question, how did you, did you overcome adversity? You know, having that experience there will help you, so.
And now more than ever, collaborative uh, skills are, is more, is important in every organization, so this is just a, you know, bu- building teamwork or understanding teamwork, being part of a team, especially if you're not, you know, the starters.
Right, well, and that's what's so great about middle school, is you don't have to be good, you know, like, yeah.
Because.
My daughter tried all kinds of stuff, and then she found out she was actually good at some, so, you know.
But they, they understand, on any team, everyone has their role.
Yeah.
No matter what, and that's, I think, what's been a little bit difficult. You know, what my observations of, you know, the past number of years is that students are less interested if they're not starting, so to speak. And we, if we can change that at all, because not everybody in an organization is gonna be the CEO, so, so that. I have another question regarding just the general, uh, I see we got thirteen new hires, but we got five, I think, paras that uh, three resignations and two retirements, so how are we, how are we looking two weeks?
We still have some teachers, I talked to Lauren right before I got into the meeting, we still have some teachers yet to be, um, you know, get through licensure and some other pieces, and we, that typically happens, but, you know, it's been a little bit more challenging due to COVID and due to some of their staffing challenges as well. I would say paras are a little bit more of a concern right now, um, you know, we are, we are missing a number of our paras, um, from resignations and retirements, you talked about as well, and, um, while I believe we're gonna start the year, you know, with a, a good group of staff or with our WSP group, I am concerned about our lack of, lack of applicant pool in particular, but also, excuse me, our lack in general of, you know, getting anybody hired at such a crucial time, and so we are looking at a number of initiatives, not only for our parrot category, um, but also for our substitutes as well, cause that's been a concern. And I, I keep looking at you, Aster, because that was something you asked about maybe three or four months ago, and it hasn't gone without, um, a considerable amount of work. There's just some tricky things that occur, and there's some things that we have to think about from a staffing standpoint to ensure that we are adequately involving all groups associated with WSP, and so as you walk through that, you may even see something to you, September, October, about something that we'll be doing that may be retroactive, so we're still working on that diligently.
Is it possible that you can send us or give us information of what the requirements are for the substitute?
Absolutely.
I looked online on the website, I had a couple of people that were interested, um.
But it's not teaching.
For the building substitute?
Build subs.
Yeah, I mean, and let me know, we'll reach out to them, I mean, there's, there's.
Right now. So we went to the website, and it just, the information, it was hard to.
We.
The specifics, I guess.
I appreciate that, because again, we are training people as well, um, to potentially get their substitute authorization if you have individuals that don't have a teaching license, and so, let's connect, but if there's other things that you would like for us to put on there that can make it a little bit more flexible or open, we are, we are definitely open, and we're looking for people. We only were able to fill approximately fifty percent of our building substitute positions, and we did that, as I talked to you before, looking at equity first and looking at our unfilled candidates, our underfilled buildings, unfilled percentage rate, to ensure that we were hitting those buildings first that had the higher percentage of unfilled spots, but I would tell you that if you could ask every single principal right now, a hundred percent of them would say they didn't want a building sub.
Cause these were December twenty-one graduates of you and I, so they would come in with a degree.
Oh, yeah.
But they didn't have, they didn't know what, you know, what type of certifications or, or stuff. So if they could possibly get it done, within their time.
Let's, let's talk, yeah, let's talk, we'll figure that out.
He's gonna lock him in a room, and then I'm gonna leave with our contract.
Sign it, sign it, sign it.
Have we done one of the classes that we were talking about again, have we, you know, the one that, um, the A.A. traditionally does to, um, to train people who have a BA or BS who wanna become a sub? And we had talked about providing that for our, our paras and stuff, right?
We couldn't provide it ourselves, we had to have somebody that was certified, and then that would open them up to teaching literally the entire state. We just had a list of different locations, and most of them are online, I actually took it myself, and so, to that extent, we pay for that training, we, um, we pay for everything, we pay for training, license, almost everything.
Do we have people do it?
Yeah, we did, um, the, I don't wanna go too much into it, but the, the problem that came was that the law changed a little bit, and so when I say a little bit, the emergency proclamation went away, and so a group of, uh, myself, as well as some other H.R. leaders were trying to get an audience with the governor to talk about, could you, we know why the proclamation, emergency proclamation was reinstated at the time, we're still dealing with the COVID pandemic, and so we need some help, and if you could extend it another year, that would greatly help out not only our substitutes or potential substitutes, but also our, our new teachers, um, that, you know, may have, you know, maybe not passed the initial part of the practice, whatever the case may be, get them in the classroom right away, they can learn some of those skills and take it later.
I have just one, I'm sorry, one more, um, are we gonna be able to do anything to honor our retired Marines this year? Since I know we didn't, we didn't last year, but, you know.
We did.
We had a party, where was I?
Yep, we sure did, yep.
Okay.
Now, it wasn't super well attended because of COVID, but we did have, people came, it was actually a really nice celebration, it was very nice.
I bet if you went back through our Facebook feed, you could find, because Tara livestreamed and, and did it, and they, we had to have, they did a little book, and Jane and I both spoke, and I swear, it, it did happen. It was in May, which was a crazy month for.
Yeah, I still had my daycare babies.
Yes.
One more question. So I see quite a few coaching resignations. Where are we at for coaches in the district?
We're still.
Specifically for the fall sports.
Let me get back to that, I can't remember off the top of my head, I know that we posted a number of different positions recently, I, I believe I've seen a couple of recommendations for hire just come in today, um, for some of the fall sports, so I'll get you for our, our weekly update, I'll get you some analysis on that.
Fall sports being football, basketball.
Men's swing.
Basketball, okay, I just wanna make sure. All of them, okay.
No, men's swing's winner, I'm kidding, I'm just throwing it out. Golf. Alright. Then, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item E, and the recommended motion here is, and this is on page sixty, uh, the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the contract service agreement between the Tri-County Child Family Development Council, Inc., and the Waterloo Community Schools for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
So.
Thank you, Aster, and who was that second, was that you, Jessie?
That was Lyle.
Lyle, okay, see, I can't watch and listen and, okay, and discussion, I know.
I think I beat him, but, it's okay.
Okay, I'll flip it around.
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, and discussion.
Yeah. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but it wasn't clear to me where these services, what schools? Where these schools are gonna be provided, I know it's at Elkhron, and other than that, what are the other schools? And which there's actually a in-person class, and are all these in-person?
You two may are, but we will invite our exes. And when you guys get up there to the microphone, you need to just push that little button to make sure the green light's on. And introduce yourselves, please.
Liz Schmitz, I'm the CFO for Tri-County Head Start.
Welcome, Liz.
Dr. Shar.
Charlotte Sada, early childhood administrator for one of the schools.
So you want to answer the services?
Well, whatever you wanna.
We're Elkhron, Kittrel, Orange, Lincoln.
You get it?
Elkhron, Kittrel.
Quiz, um.
Orange, Lincoln.
Orange, Lincoln, there's one.
Irving?
Irving.
Irving.
I think that's it, yeah.
Good job. You paying us good money, good, nowhere it's going.
So is this the same as last year?
Yes, yep, there was no changes to the number of children or the number of staff that we provide.
So there's like, at Kittrel, Orange, and Irving, there's one classroom maybe, or how does that work?
At Kittrel, there's about four classrooms, at Irving, there's about one, and where was the last school you said, Lyle?
Orange.
Orange, you said?
And orange, we have a, actually, we have three classrooms there, and uh, yeah.
And how many at Elkhron?
Oh, gosh, Lyle. Uh.
Eight, seven.
Yeah, seven.
Okay. And so how do we determine what kids go where?
Well, what we do, again, we have a point system to determine need, and you know, uh, we, we, uh, children are, you know, kinda are weighted and assigned points, and, um, you know, Head Start is federally funded a hundred percent of poverty, so, you know, that, that's right away, and then we have a point system to determine needs, so we can make sure that we're serving the needy children.
So, but there's no transportation, correct?
No.
So. These locations, I mean, are, are some families, are some kids not able to go because. These locations, I mean, are, are some families, are some kids not able to go because of lack of transportation?
You know, we, we kinda mitigated that some years ago when we went to full day programming. You know, some years ago, uh, which you're veteran, we, we, we stopped, we stopped, we uh went to about one o'clock. And um parents were having trouble coming to get their kids about one, so we went to full day programming. And that has really, really helped that and so we really don't get too many concerns about transportation.
We also have a contract with the Y kids to subsidize the before and after care for those families and we have. We employ family service workers that work with the families on any of their um transportation needs or other social service needs.
And there is a registration process, Lyle, um there's a particular day when they start, we start receiving applications and it, you know, we've. We, we kinda joke about that because we make sure we clear out our parking lot because people will start coming very early in the morning and they wanna get, you know, so it is. There is some element of first come, first pick as far as location. So if you live right beside Irving, you're going to want that school and there's only a certain amount of slots. And so, and a certain amount of rooms and so, you know, p- parents will line up and they want those, that. Their first choice and so they're stamped on when they come in, but that being said, I think that. The ladies in front of us as well as the staff that they represent behind the scenes um do a really good job of trying to work with parents and. Get them the choice that is, is best for them. Is that always? Are we always a hundred percent in getting everybody their first preference that? No, we, we are not. Not on, not on pre-K because there's a limited number of rooms in a particular building and so we do try to offer. Options all over our community, but you know, there, if there's only, you know. Three programs at Orange and, you know, two programs here or whatever, there's, you know, that. So people sometimes do have to make those choices and then we do offer transportation for special ed, pre-K, special ed. They, there is a transportation requirement or um.
So the reason there's, they're not, you don't have programs anymore at schools is space?
Yep, typically, a, a few years ago, I know with Lowell being spacebound, we at one time had one program there. And we ended up having to move that out because we had a large kindergarten class and so we placed the pre-K elsewhere now, you know, we tried to write it. Best case scenario, you would have at least two in every building so that, we, we don't like one. I don't mean to speak for you. We try really hard not to have one pre-K in an elementary because the lack of collaboration. And so we try to have at least two or three if we can in an elementary, but um, you know, to be honest, there's a little bit of a. A dance with this, trying to make sure we're placing students where the need is and, and placing programs where the need is. Um and where the, where the families exist and we have added, uh, you know. I would think that many people know I was, before I was sitting in the superintendent seat, I was sitting in the associate superintendent seat, so I've worked with uh Charlotte for a long time and. Uh we would kinda save up our money because you had to fund the first year on your existing dollars and then you would get back funded. And so we would really save up to be able to launch a new program and we'd pay for that first year and then we'd save up a little more and then we would launch another one. So we, over the years, have launched lots of programs, lots, lots of additional pre-K programs, so. We feel that right now, I think we're getting to the point where ev- almost everybody who wants a pre-K classroom gets a pre-play, pre-K spot. And we, I mean, we're very collaborative and I think with, with um Tri-County's support, we really do work on that, so I'll stop.
What, what was the number of Lincoln?
Yeah, I didn't have you repeat, Lincoln, we didn't catch it.
Lincoln, we have two classrooms.
So when Lowell takes and we, we are gonna, how many, how many there, I'm sorry, did you say twelve? So that will take the Elkhorn classrooms, but will the others remain then?
I don't know about.
Yeah, the other buildings?
Yeah, for sure, so we, uh, we're trying to, I mean, we're always going to want to have pre-K programs all over. And because we have so many pre-K classrooms and only twelve new classrooms, while we, we will be moving some into the new. The new space, but it, it won't house all of them, so we will remain, I mean, there will be pre-K. Classrooms all over, kind of that neighborhood concept and so those will remain. Uh we are right now doing a pretty full analysis of, of how to organize pre-K, but I, I would never wanna send a message to our families. That you're going to lose a pre-K, a neighborhood pre-K classroom because that is not the case at all. We intend to make sure there's ample opportunities for pre-K families to select a program close to them. To the extent possible, knowing that we don't fill every request, we just can't. Um and one year's it might be one building that we have an overflow and the next year it might be a different building, so just depending on numbers.
Yeah, we don't turn, there's not a lot of having to turn families away, is what you're saying?
It was movable over the years too, they moved.
Yeah, I think we did at one time, I think when I was sitting in the associate superintendent, I think that particular year, we may have had thirty-eight to forty. Families we could not serve, but that is not the case now, since that time, we've launched lots of new programs because we've managed our money well and, and brought on programs, so. And built our buildings to have the space to handle the capacity, so.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Charlotte, on your new position.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Liz.
Alright, then all those in favor of approving the, the Tri-County uh service agreement, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item F and this is on page eighty-five, this is the Project Lead the Way exploratory kit purchase. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of thirty-nine VEX V-five kits. And thirty-six medical detective kits at a total cost of ninety-four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars. To support Project Lead the Way classes at our four middle schools. Thank you, Jesse, and a second, Stacy, and discussion.
I was just curious, um so Project Lead the Way, is it all STEM or are these just the ones that are being replaced?
These are, I, yeah, can you take that question, so years ago, uh I wanna say three or four years ago. Oh goodness, time goes so fast, it's been since I've been the superintendent, so no more than eight, but we had, we had um. We revamped all of our middle school exploratory programs to be aligned to the pathways at the Career Center. And so that was when we um, we added in at like sixth grade, we added medical detectives and a technology. At eighth grade, we added robotics and Project Lead the Way. Um at seventh grade, there was a, there's an intro to human services and then another one that I can't think of right now because I'm on the spot. But anyway, so those, those programs are all aligned to pathways at the high school, so. We wrote a grant to the Schuetz Foundation at that time for three hundred thousand dollars to kick off all of the new materials, the new. There were some furniture needs that would house certain, you know, modules and so. Uh we were successful in getting that grant and so we were really happy, uh you know, thank you to, to Schuetz and, and to all of the funders who supported. You know, that effort and so um at this point in time, this is really a renewal of. Some of those kits, um these are not new kits that we haven't had before, they really are refurbishing and replenishing. And in some cases, replacing, uh we have piecemealed for the last year. Um trying to put them together and it just came to the point in time where we really just needed to do some replacement parts and so. Uh this is replacing, this is supporting our middle school exploratory program, um, yeah.
Is the Project Lead the Way automation, automation and robotics separate from the um. The first robotics that they are doing in middle school?
Because the, the first, uh, the robotics program is an after-school program and then there's this robotics program that is part of the eighth grade's. Exploratory cycle, right, so. They can do, a student could, I mean, all students will go through eighth grade ro- robotics. Because it's on the wheel and we call it the wheel, which is a cycle that they all experience everything and then of course, when they get to high school, they can go down one track and. Pick and choose, but we really want kids to try everything so they can get a taste of it and then the teachers talk about, you know, gosh, if you really like. Um medical detectives when you get to high school, here's how you could continue those studies, if you really like robotics at eighth grade, then here's things that you could do. In addition to that though, then we have the, the Lego League and the, the robotics programs that we do after school, does that make sense?
Yes, what, what are exploratories then, do they, they still have art at middle school?
Art, they have art, um PE, PE, there are certain things through, there's a, there's um code. Uh in administrative code that regulates what exploratories they have to have during their middle school years and so there's. Requirements for art, there's requirements for PE, there's requirements for music, um and those are really the only three, art. Art, music and PE and then in addition to that, you can have other ex- exploratory just means that they're exploring and so. We fill those with these, but they do have to take the others.
So this is like in, our industrial tech and our. Home ec turned into the.
Right, and we've really tried to modernize those courses, so you know, industrial tech still exists in a little bit different format. Um family and consumer science still exists in a little different format, it's not exactly wholesale change out, but there's still. The, the intro to human services has a little bit of childcare, a little bit of teaching, a little bit of food prep, a little bit of nutrition. So it has all of those things in it, it's just modernized so that it fits, but it still does meet the administrative code chapter uh twelve.
So do you see that there are ben- that since you've done this? Have you seen the benefit that you were looking for as far as, as kids coming out of middle school then and, and flowing into the Career Center?
Right, yeah, uh you know, I, I don't know that there's been, I, I think it's really hard to isolate. Our enrollment at the Career Center is growing. Um it's hard for me to isolate like how much of our growth would be directly related to this program. It's really more that it's part of a recipe and so, you know, in addition to having all of our, our kids take these exploratory. The things on the wheel, uh which I know doesn't make sense too, that's just what we call it, um exploratory wheel, um. So in, in addition to taking that, you know, we do tours, we even started doing tours last year, you know, e- exclu- excluded that. Having our fifth graders go to experience the Career Center, having our eighth graders go, having our ninth graders go, having intro classes at ninth grade so that they can try it out. So it really is part of a, a, a broader recipe of, of bolstering our, our knowledge, our awareness of the programs that exist. And thus our enrollment.
Right, and, and for the kids who choose not to do it, the, the staff, you still see that there's a benefit in these courses even, I mean, obviously.
And these are very hands-on, they're very STEM-related, a lot of them are STEM-related, not all of them, but um. They're, you know, they're, the kids typically will really, really like the exploratory classes and I, I mean, I've. I haven't had two, two middle schoolers and they really do like that and they're very, they're different um from, you know, some of the others and they're, they're quite rigorous. Um I mean, they, some of them are very rigorous, that is, it's a little bit, they're tough, some of them are tough, but it's good, it's very challenging. It does, yeah, just a different type of class and so.
What do you have, do we know what the enrollment at the Career Center is gonna be this fall?
I can report the next round, um I, we're still working on schedules. The Career Counseling Center that opened this summer has really um. Enhanced the number of families who are calling and we're still switching some schedules, I, I believe it will be up significantly, let me just say that. We had about a, 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 two years ago, we had a thousand students, last year we had a thousand students, although we were scheduled to have about twelve hundred last year. COVID really changed a few things and so um we ended up right at a thousand, it was a very, very level year for us last year, we didn't lose any students, but we didn't gain like we had thought we would. For a variety of reasons, virtual learners and that kinda thing, so I, 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 I don't wanna toss out a number right now because I don't wanna overpromise or underpromise, but um. It, it will be significantly up. That is over the two semesters, so, yeah, and the first semester was, was quite low last year and then last spring as things kind of leveled out. Then we had, uh, we, I think we might have had about double the students in the spring, so in, I, in the fall, I think we might have had, you know. Three to four hundred kids was all in the fall and then the second semester was much higher, so this year is gonna be. Significantly higher, but I can definitely get those numbers as we hone in on next week.
And can I just put in a plug for families that do still need counseling, uh help, it's open, yes? Eight to, eight to four? It's on our website, I know.
Yeah, I think it's uh eight to two on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays and ten to four on.
And there's a number that families can call just to meet with somebody.
So I, they, they are open for business and they, I've heard uh lots of parents who have really, it has been very helpful for them, so. Things that you used to have to wait until. And now we're changing, we're fixing things right now and answering questions right now and it's, it's great. Alright, um then all those in favor of approving the Project Lead the Way exploratory kit purchase, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That uh concludes our action items for tonight and so I am going to ask. Michael Coughlin to come forward and we're gonna do some, an ESSER funding update and I bet you have a great slide presentation for us. Maybe you do. Nope, we're actually, we're actually just gonna talk about it, this is gonna be a, a. Never mind, Michael, you're, I'm so used to your slide presentations. So we actually are, are talking about the ESSER, I think, Kingsley, I don't know if you were planning on starting or if I can start or. No, um and Michael's available to answer questions here, so really what we um wanted to kind of. Roll out tonight is just to talk a little bit about the ESSER dollars, we know that. The, we've, we've publicized pretty heavily and I think Andrew's done quite a few articles about uh the, the ESSER three dollars that came in three rounds. And so ESSER three is thirty-four million dollars for Waterloo schools, just under that, thirty-three something. Yep, just under thirty-four um millions, so we are working really hard on meeting the, the intent of the law. And the spirit, the, the letter of the law, there are certain things that we have to fund out of those dollars and then there's certain things that we can fund out of those dollars. There is an application that's out right now, it was launched on August first, which is just uh last week and then uh is due on the twentieth. It is not an application for us to unveil what we're buying, what we're spending the money on, it is not at all. Uh it is, it is actually an application that's asking us, how will you go about finding out what you're gonna spend the money on? And how will you go about getting a needs assessment, how will you identify the purchases and the, the best priorities to, where to use. Things to use your money on, so uh that will be, we will file that on the twentieth, but actually probably right on the twentieth. And there's some, there's some stipulations in there that you have to do some, you have to get some input and so we have a survey, we um. We have talked with um some different groups, we had, we did a survey for all of our staff and so we had, you know, hundreds of applica-. Hundreds of responses from um that survey, we have the survey going out to the public, we have. Um we met with a, a parent group on that and just got some feedback on that and again, we do not know exactly what we're gonna spend all the money on. This goes through uh twenty twenty-four, so it really will take a while for us to do that, but. The, the letter of the law, the spirit of the law is that we would get feedback on what are the best things to do, so. Um I don't know, Kingsley, if you, you had talked a little bit today that you were gonna go through some of the broader pots or silos of things that we're gonna spend in and. Yeah, Michael has done the bulk of our tracking on this, on where we are on, on, on dollars.
So, you know, just briefly, when we're talking about, you know, Jane talked about the multiple modes of not only communication but feedback that we're getting. From multiple stakeholders, just in regards to ESSER funding and while it is a requirement, you know, I just wanna give credit to Jane and Dr. Women in this district. It's been a priority for us to make sure that we receive feedback because we don't want to just assume that um. You know, we know exactly what we're gonna do and we have some ideas, but we wanna make sure that we're hearing from our parents as well, our parents or families and other community members that are invested. In Waterloo schools and staff as well, so Jane already alluded to, we did have some staff that shared, um you know. What their initial feelings were about the ESSER dollars earlier in the, or actually right before we left for the summer. And so with that, some of the key items that we did, so we, the survey that's actually gonna be sent out tomorrow or even Wednesday. To against staff again, but also to families in the district community is going to have two different pieces, one piece is going to be. The actual ESSER pots that the law allows you to pull money from, so we want it to be transparent with our community about. Here's what you can potentially look at in regards to that and get some good data from that. here's what you can potentially look at in regards to that and get some good data from that. Secondarily, we'd already asked our staff this question. And so we did take what they had shared with us and then also put that into a ranking categorization that our community can then, and also our staff, um, provide a little bit more information about where they would rank some of those things. So as I look at the data here right now, you know, the four or the three key buckets that really fell in for what our staff talked about was loss of instructional time, student achievement and promoting equity. And that's awesome to hear our staff talk about some of those things. Um, again, not just because of the fact that there's loss, loss of instruction, but also that we've talked a lot about equity. I know Dr. Moore is not here, but she's talked a lot about equity and have that as one of the categories is just exciting for our staff to really focus in on student achievement, loss of instruction and promoting equity. And so within those buckets are just, um, I'll just give you the top maybe two. Within loss of instruction, it was discussion around more instructional time. How do we find more instructional time, um, for our students? And then look at, um, uses for materials and technology to help our students and really close that gap. For student achievement, a huge focus on SEO, our student social emotional, um, learning and curriculum, but also looking at class sizes. And we have made some alterations to our class sizes at the elementary level in response to that. And then last but not least, really promoting, you know, diversity and inclusion and looking at again, how are we digging into the data from a, a race ethnicity standpoint to ensure that we are are closing the gap for many of our students that are historically marginalized populations that unfortunately, due to COVID, um, I think it's, I think a lot of the literature has said learning loss, but I think it's been opportunity loss where our students just weren't with us. And so because of that, they didn't have the opportunity to learn. So how are we gonna close that gap with some of our historically marginalized populations? So that's the breakdown of the different buckets that we will be sending out to parents, families, staff, again, and also to the community to ensure they have another opportunity to rank order those, but also maybe to give us some additional ideas that we didn't think about. So this is an exciting time, an exciting time for community engagement, um, to again, help us inform our processes and protocols around these dollars and how we can move forward together.
So there, I, I'm sorry, I'll, we'll finish two things and then we'll open it up for, um, comments and questions. The first thing I was gonna say is that we actually, the state of Iowa, the Department of Education also has dollars that were allocated to them. And so I've mentioned it before, but one of the, they, they chose to use their money in three different ways. I, I don't think it's all of their money, but their, a, a thirty million dollar pot of money is being used in, uh, three different ways. And Waterloo was one of the recipients of that. So and just so, Andrew, just so you, I'm sure you already know, but I'll just repeat them again. So the first one is the University of Iowa, um, received twenty million dollars to bolster mental health supports and, um, part of their mental health institute. And I don't, um, you know, I don't have all of the details on that, but I know that that was one of the the programs that was approved. And then the second one was Council Bluffs received, they were the second recipient and they got money to start to actually build a new facility for early childhood care. And so, and, and, um, and have a, an academic component to that. So they're actually building a new facility there for birth, I think it's birth through three. Um, that will be connected to the schools and the school district and then, uh, which is really a pilot program. I think some of that was underway. And then this, the third thing was, was the achievement gap work, which is Waterloo schools. And so we originally had some of that work to be paid out of our dollars because we were gonna work and do these different things. And then the state of Iowa came in and said, we would like to work along with you and we will pay for it out of our pot of money. And so you know, there's, it's, it's the thirty-four million dollars, but it's the collaborative effort that we have across the board. So that's, um, one, that's one thing I wanted to say. And then the final comment that I would say before, and Michael, you might have things too, but we're really early in the stages of getting this solidified. So we're working this through. We brought it to you today even before we know exactly what everything is gonna be because we really wanna establish a pattern of reporting out and transparency to not only you as a school board, but also to our community. So we, I don't, while I don't know exactly how often, we will have ESSER, an ESSER update on our, our board, um, agenda. I don't know if it'll be regularly like, you know, the first meeting of every month or whether it'll be, you know, every meeting or whether it'll be every three meetings. I'm not exactly sure. Um, but, but you can expect and the public can expect that we will be sharing this information out so that people kind of keep a running tack, tab. Here's what we've used the money for. Here's how much is left. Here's how much certain things cost. Um, so we're kind of looking, looking through that. For example, one of the things that we did already s- fund was summer school. Could be funded out of these dollars and we didn't necessarily, you know, the, the state of Iowa gave us, gave all districts some, um, suggestions on, you know, if you're, if you're not really, you know, if, you have to be careful about spending too much money before your plan is approved on August twentieth. However, there were certain things that they said, these will be guaranteed approvals and summer school was one of them. So uh, we were able to go ahead and fund, fund that out of, out of this pot of money. But other than that, um, you know, most of it is still in the planning, planning stages. And Michael, what would you add? He's been really kind of the the organizer behind the scenes and he has some great spreadsheets that we're working on.
Well, it, it is a bigger picture than just ESSER three. Um, we've been doing this since March, um, when the pandemic hit and we got some initial funding from the previous administration. Um, that was to react to the immediate needs of cleaning and, um, providing leaves and, and, and managing. Um, the other part that also got, um, involved in that was um, the state's gear money. I mean, there's been a lot of acronyms that you have heard over the last um, couple of years, but we started with CARES and gear. Um, and no, I don't remember what the acronym stand for at the moment, but that will, that will be something coming out. Um, but that kind of switched over when additional ESSER money came out. Um, so we got two point six million, uh, in ESSER one, which was the CARES money. We got a little over fifteen million in ESSER two, um, that came out from the first, uh, action from the Biden administration. And then the American Recovery Plan, which is really ESSER three, um, is the program that starts basically today as school starts this fall, going to the end of twenty twenty-four. So there's been very similar, but different focuses on all three of these pots of money. Um, and we've been dealing with each one as they came along when we thought uh, two point six was a nice little sum to use and then fifteen hit and it was like, where do we, we're gonna have to get serious. And then, um, thirty-three million followed on that. And there is still talk of other special funding that could come for, uh, different needs. Um, so there's still things in the pipeline that may add, enhance to this switcher direction a little bit. Um, the part that I'm part of is listening to all of this conversation, answering questions of what can be done when. And from my aspect, um, it's just managing this sizable amount of funding, um, to follow the rules, get the timelines done, get things in the right place, answer questions. Um, and to promote, um, that yes, we can do that. Um, and we have been in, um, that situation forever, that do we have the money to do this? It's always been, how do we find it? How do we manage it? How do we, um, be flexible with it to get to the needs we have? And in the next few years, um, that is not the question. It is, how do we view this in light of what we need to do? What do the kids need? What does our educational delivery system need? Um, you were talking about, um, eighth grade exploratory. Um, and this year, the question was not, do we have enough money to replace what we've been doing? It was think in broader terms. You've been doing an exploratory based on what we have. But where's, where's WCC going? Thirty programs? How do we equip and anticipate the exploratory program to fit things we don't even know yet? And to start changing that way of thinking of saying, yes, we can do this. And we need to have people thinking ahead of the curve, not just saying, how do we just keep going? It's how do we enhance it? And, and that's the mentality that really should be. And it is developing in all of the areas that we're looking at. Because it's not just adjusting to the gap that we had. It's saying, well, we now have funding opportunities to enhance everything that we've been doing to things that we never thought we had funding to do in the, in the past. So it is an exciting time, but it's a po- it's a time to be very responsible. And really focus on what the district can be under this type of a funding mechanism. So it's a challenge from top to bottom, but it's a challenge of how do we fulfill that? Uh, with these kind of funds to use and enhance what we're doing. So, um, it's a good problem to have.
Well, especially with us losing our, um, diversity plan, um, this really is, it, it is exciting. Um, I just had one question. What, why did Waterloo receive that amount? Like, yeah, what ma- what made us stand out?
Um, it was a federal formula, um, and one of the mechanisms that the federal government has is our Title I information. Because all the federal funding from Title I is very scrutinized by number of kids and buildings that qualify and um, that was the mechanism that they chose to divide these federal funds. So yes, it was, um, there was discussion about why wasn't it done just on pure enrollment numbers? Um, because if you look at our district, um, I mean, we're one of the bigger districts and we got, um, a higher amount than most. Um, but when you start going down the list, for instance, a district that's half our size did not get half of what we did. It's all based on the numbers that they have qualified for Title I. Um, it was a federal mandate. There was, um, districts in the state here and states all across the nation that said, gov- mister, miss gov- governor, can't you change that to fit our needs? Rather than what the federal government has dictated. And they said, no, we can't. We are bound by that and we don't have any opportunity to change it. So it's still a, it's still a conversation every time funding comes out. Um, just for instance, um, one of the new fundings coming out is dealing with special education. Well, does that make sense that it would be divided by Title I numbers? You know, cause it, it may not have any real good, um, tie to, to that structure. Um, but to this point, that's what they've been using, but I would anticipate that there's going to be some different when it's a smaller amount and they, it isn't quite the massive amount of funding going out that, um, there may be some different measurements used to divide it, but we haven't seen that yet. It's all been based on Title I.
So the districts that have higher Title I qualifying, student qualifying, got more money, so.
Right. No. Right. Yes.
Okay. My concern is that you say you're doing surveys. But and maybe the content, the context of the surveys are important. Um, let me go back to my ten years in logistics. You know, and solve a problem, how do we get more materials more efficiently and more effectively? The first and obvious answer is was faster trucks. Okay. Kind of became a joke. All right. So some of this to me is saying, okay, summer school, morning intervention, extended day after school. And to me, it's faster trucks. Okay. We can do that, but that doesn't really isn't gonna effectively solve the problem. It's not enough. So in that context, you know, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just set aside a specific I mean, the feedback you're gonna get is based on traditional, well, are we even gonna support the hour core? We're gonna even extra curricular all that, but there's this out of the box or more creative approach of, and I think Mike was alluding to new programs that we haven't ever done before. This is where my, my insertion animals, my chickens and schools comes in. Those sorts of things that we haven't done. But it isn't just the raisins and chickens. You can do math and reading and everything, everything off that. It's just a, it's just a new experience. You know, call it experience based, whatever you wanna call it, experience based learning maybe. But, uh, I'm wondering if we shouldn't set aside a certain number of dollars to do the out of the box, the crazy stuff, the stuff we've never done before.
So while, you're gonna be excited. So we just, we just talked about this this week. So there are two things that we have talked about. One of them is, um, supplementing building budgets for some creative pilot programs. Our, our building, we have a formula that we use to allocate bill to create building budgets. We have a district budget, we have a building budget. So we talked about that as well. Um, supplementing the building budgets, but then also putting a pot of money in a discretionary fund that they could apply for an innovative, you know, the, the Waterloo School Foundation has something they call innovative teacher, innovative teacher grants or teacher innovative grants. I'm not sure which innovative teacher. I wasn't sure about the order of that. So, and, and people can apply for something that's, you know, new and unique that they wanna try and then, you know, so there, there is gonna, I mean, that's right now. We haven't solidified how, we're gonna use the money, but the, the, the thinking, I was just pulled up by my minutes from my, I meet with Michael every week and um, we were just talking about the allocation and how this discretionary, um, um, app- application would be sort of a building principal or a group of teachers that are working with their principal and they apply for that. And just, we wanted to make some basic questions, but then funding that and how will we measure that? Because if there's something really amazing on that, then we would wanna replicate it. So how would we track that along the way? So again, we have not solidified our full budget, but that is, that currently is in, uh, that is in the works right now. We actually have gone so far as to create a discretionary application where people can apply. Um, I don't know that it's in its final state yet, but, but, um, we believe that very same thing, that this is, this is the time to pursue um, some pilot, you know, maybe a little bit more risky, um, things because, you know, sometimes when my money is so tight, you just have to absolutely stick with what you know because you don't but right now, we, we have the opportunity and we, um, we have the opportunity to pursue that. So we agree.
So I would hope, you know, we've had enough schools if everyone was a laboratory of one.
Yeah.
You know, non-traditional, out of the box, maybe even a, an, uh, carny unit, uh, uh, program, um, space-based, experience-based, strong on those things. Uh, after a year or so, we probably we'll have really good information about what, what worked that we didn't expect to and what didn't work that we expected to and, and move on generally from there. So.
So you can influence Michael right now here in the public. I, cause I told, before next week's meeting, I had asked him to come back with to, to our meeting, um, you know, with, uh, projection on how much he wants to increase building budgets, but then also how much would be in this pot of discretionary money. So you know, he's, he's thinking about what would be appropriate and we're, we're gonna talk about that next week, but you know, if you have a number, you could pass that on to him this week and he will probably
Twenty-five percent.
Uh, oh, oh. Not that.
Don't give me that, faster trucks.
Yeah. So would this then be able to be used for some of this stuff like, um, Yeah, so would this then be able to be used for some of the stuff like, um, Zach that Erwin was talking about with the, the space he'll have now that? Um, Sloan Wallace, the stadium movie gone, some of the stuff he was talking about doing? Is that kinda what you're thinking about, like more hands-on? He started by doing some garden stuff and just bringing in families?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, I think what Michael was, was talking about is really looking at our strategic plan, finding out what we wanna, what we wanna do, what, you know, what things need to be done. And then what things would be innovative and, and, um, and then looking, and then actually asking Michael to do his magic on, on what gets funded through what pot of money. So I don't know specifically to answer your question, which is a good one, I just don't know exactly like, would that project at Sloan be funded with this? I actually couldn't answer that right now, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no, you're not, no, you're not at all, I just don't have a very good answer for that. But, um, the, the good part is, you know, with, with this infusion of money, there certainly is money to do, you know, a, a lot of things. And so, um, yeah.
I like twenty-five percent too.
Well, stay tuned and, and I, I appreciate that we started this conversation and Andrew, you know, I think it's gonna be great to watch us. Not just the board, but our community and our district as we, as we get through this and process this and continue to report about it. Because, um, I do think it is an exciting opportunity as well, so. All right, so stay tuned. And with that, I will turn it over, I know you've, uh, given you.
I know, I've already spoken a lot today, so I'm just gonna say a couple things in the superintendent's report. So first of all, I just, this is probably a really good time of the year to thank all of the people throughout the summer who have been working so diligently. As we're out in buildings and, you know, we're, we're, we're in the, we finished the first day of administrator retreat, which is three days. Uh, we were out at Central, we happened to be housing it there and as I walk around and, and I can hear, listen to the administrators walk in, they're like, I love shiny floors, you know, they look beautiful. And everything looks, you know, squeaky clean and, you know, uh, the hinge on a particular door that wasn't functioning right has now been fixed and every, you know, everything is just really, it, summer is a great time. And so, you, and then technology, I just walk around and I see all of these, you know, computers that are lined up and the new shipments that are coming in and all of these, you know, our technology department that is just going, uh, you know, beyond, beyond, beyond. Uh, to make sure everything's ready, our, our clerical staff, I had the opportunity last week to speak to the back, the clerical staff on their back to school or back to work. Um, they come back on August second this year and so I had a chance to address the work that they do. It's just, you know, it, it kinda, Lyle, it goes back to your comment, everybody has a role. And so everybody has worked so hard for the summer to make sure that we're ready. The administrators today were working super hard, I happened to be on a building and I saw one of our nurses there trying to get things lined up. And so it's just, there's just so much happening right now, so I just, there's plenty of time to, to thank people, but this is, I want, I, there's probably plenty of, um, things to go around too, so, or, or people to thank. So that's great, a reminder about opening, uh, opening, um, next week, our, our staff comes back and then the, the week following, on August twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, our students will be coming back. We will continually, um, remind our staff about the rolling start that we're doing. So on August twenty-third, we have kindergarten first, sixth and ninth coming back. And then the next day, we add to that, second, third, seventh and tenth. And then, uh, the twenty-fifth, the last day, we add everybody else. So it'll take us three, three days to get everybody back in and of course, the last day is fourth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, eleventh and twelfth. And so, um, and we have, um, Aqua Inji here, who is our new communications director, uh, director of, of school and community relations. And so she, we met today to really talk through, well, we've been meeting, but, um, we met today to really talk about communication and making sure that we are prepared to provide the necessary information to families. So we'll make sure we get that out to everybody, but I think that's, that's great. Um, we have other groups that are meeting, we have coaches classic coming up on August sixteenth, which is a chance for us to bring all of our coaches together. And, and by coaches in this case, I mean our athletic coaches who will be coming together. When they come into the room, it really fills the room, it's, it's held in an auditorium and it's, there's a lot of people there and it just reminds me. You know, how many people it takes to run our, our building into our district to make sure that everybody had, kids have lots of opportunities, so I think that's great. Um, just a timely note, we just sent out to families just this afternoon and I don't actually, I'm gonna look to see what time it came out, um, five oh three, so it's fresh, fresh, fresh. Uh, but we are partnering with Black Hat County Public Health and with Unity Point to offer two vaccination clinics. We've been asked over and over and over where families can have, you know, twelve years old and can, uh, can be vaccinated. And so we, uh, and Kingsley, kudos to you, um, we really worked with them and we arranged two sites for families to come in. And it can be the, not only the twelve-year-old students, but also their families, their parents can come as well, so. Uh, there's signup sheets at West and at East for any of our families and they will have all gotten this, uh, this link at five oh three. And I guarantee that it'll go out again to remind people about that, but, um, we're trying to make it easier for families to do what they need to do, you know, or what they want to do. I will say, you know, I'm gonna read a sentence out of this, it says, um, we're, we're partnering to bring this, but it says, remember COVID vaccinations are not required. We offer these onsite clinics for family convenience. So, you know, I, sometimes people say, oh my gosh, that's a requirement, that, that's not the case, we really are trying to partner with families to make things easier. So that's coming up, I would just maybe tell people, it's, it, um, families, it is, uh, there's one, uh, at West High School on Thursday, August twelfth. And that's from three PM to seven PM and then there's another one the next Thursday at East, um, on August nineteenth, from three to seven. And families can go to either site, you don't, it's, it's not theater specific, it's just two different sites and two different locations. So families use whichever one and whichever date works for you, um, to go. And then I think the last thing I would just say, I was, uh, this one I didn't actually have on my list, but when we were talking about activities and our new amazing middle school activities coordinator, um. You know, I think that we have an opportunity to really revamp how we feel about middle school sports and what they can, what they can do for, for students. Lyle, I, I, I could've stood up and cheered when you said, you know, so often it's about winning and it's about, you know, if you're not good, then you need not go out absolutely. That is so wrong and it does such a disjustice to our athletic programs, it does, uh, really has negative effects for our high schools and for the students most, you know, most importantly. And so getting that right is, is really critical. And so I think that the public can expect that they're going to see some, you know, some, um, resurgence of middle school philosophy and athletic philosophy and what, what we owe to our kids. And, and how to, how to really build fundamental skills at the middle school and a, and a love and a passion for the sport. And not only focus in on who gets to start because it, that, that really is not, and I, I'm a huge Detroit Lions fan. And so I always go back to Barry Sanders, who did not play football until he was seventeen years old. And, you know, and you better all love Barry Sanders, he's the best running back ever. Um, and so I, you know, I just think that had, had he not, you know, well, you didn't play early and you're not gonna play and, and we would've missed out on some really great Detroit Lions football last time I was ready. So that's all I have to say about that, but we will definitely be working on our athletic philosophy.
And the other thing with that is, is having children who've been on like the C team before, um, having, watching the parents and the, and the eighteen kids all leave is very disheartening. And that's when you see, they just give up, you know?
We, we really do need to, you know, do this kind of full, all stakeholders understanding what middle school philosophy is for athletics and making sure that everybody's having a great opportunity. So, um, I think you're gonna see some neat things and I think we really, um, Jaden Spencer, who is, who is our new middle school coordinator, now that you voted, um, she's, she's really gonna be, she's gonna be great. So we're excited to have her onboard.
All right, board, I'll open it up to you for comments, I'm gonna start down here to my right with Mr. Schmidt tonight.
Um, yeah, when will we, uh, when can we anticipate a report in summer school?
Uh, I would say it might be even on for next time. I know that they were working on the data and there is one more week left for high school to finish up. And so we, I know they were working on elementary, um, but right now, this week, we've really been working on administrative retreats. So I think it kind of paused for this week and so we will get back to that soon, so.
All right. And then the next question is, what's, what's the process for determining what criteria for in-person learning is going to be? The, the social distancing, the masking, all that, what's that? Fluid, it seems like it's very fluid across the country right now. Uh, you know, the bottom line to me is that we offer in-person, get as many students into in-person learning as we can. Yeah, which means we don't want people not coming because they don't feel it's safe. We don't want to overburden. You know, overreact on the, on the other side to, to make schooling less effective because of all the, you know, what's, what's the process of probably new information coming out every day?
Yeah, and that's, that's a little bit of a loaded question for, for the, for the board table. I, I don't know that we can, I mean, we, we're working on that right now, we had a meeting with Public Health, we have another one coming up. And so I, I actually would just defer to that question. I don't, I don't necessarily think I have all of the information in front of me and to start that topic without being super planned would be probably misleading to our public. And so I'll hold off on answering that, but I can tell you that we worked with administrators today to unveil information that we got from Public Health and things that we've been working on through the summer. And so, um, we're, we'll be ready, I mean, we'll be ready.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Stacy. Um, I just, the, my daughter did, um, E.T. time for credit acceleration and she had a great experience this summer. Um, and all the kids were masked and so it was, it was really great, so, um, that's my own personal experience was great with it. So real quickly though, there's been, I got a bunch of people who asked questions about the, the Facebook post regarding. That you need to buy your, your school spiritware from certain vendors. Um, that was. It was very, it was kinda confusing and I think that what people were trying to figure out was, was it? Right, so is it, was it because of that or because of, and I think later it said something like, some of the clothes that they were putting on weren't dress code approved? That people, like some sites were selling, you could get West type like shorts that were meshed or something. So, um, can you just maybe clear, clear it up a little bit, just, just so that it is, you know?
I do not have the information, so I'm sorry, I do not know. Um, I can get back with you, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
And did you think some of it was based on like a trademark for West East? But I don't, I didn't see the post, so.
So, anyway. Yeah, I saw the, I mean, I don't. I don't know, I don't know. Every single email, so I'm sorry, I do not have that, so maybe somebody else can answer that.
I, I just had a lot of, yeah, I just had a lot of questions about it. And, and I know that like, like our T-shirts have to be a normal T-shirt, long, short sleeve, college shirts, long, short, short sleeve, the jackets, either a quarter zip or regular. And then hoodies, so I think that people maybe just weren't understanding that, that, I think that was. The ball?
Is your Greenland on?
There we go.
Nah.
Sorry, thank you. Um, so what my understanding is, is that with the dress code adjusting, um, certain vendors have taken the opportunity to start creating and selling and marketing apparel with school district logos. But the apparel that some of them are selling do not also align with our dress code.
And those always, I don't know, but we, those always existed, those sites have?
Sure, I think the.
They're for like extracurricular.
I think the confusion was that those opportunities came in tandem with the change in the dress code. Um, so I'll take a closer look at the social media posts that have gone out about that Katrina's been really fantastic about pulling a bunch of weight as, as I transitioned and on-boarded it. And so I'll take a look at those social media posts and make sure that we're clarifying exactly what we mean by that.
Crystal clear.
I would probably suggest that everyone will look at, cause I've heard different comments on it too, is whether or not junior program shirts, junior Waho, junior Trojans, any of that is, junior Trojans are.
Is it licensed and is it?
Or is it allowed, I've heard different, I've heard that question come up a few times, I've heard the answer different ways, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, just making it a little clearer.
It's so clear, so you'll get birthday kid wearing, because there's a lot of stuff out there too.
Yeah, the point was to make this better and easier for our families not to be.
Right.
So. Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Aster?
Oh, before, um, August nineteenth, I think that's on a Thursday, um, elementary and middle school open houses. Elementary school from four to six PM, so you can stop in, uh, to your students' classes and towards the school and you can meet, um, those people. Uh, five to seven thirty. Five thirty to seven, I believe is middle school. So four to six for elementary, five thirty to seven for, um, middle school. Just, uh, going back to the athletic, um, conversation, you knew, I got, you guys know I talk about athletics all day. I'm excited as well, right, right.
You can do that.
Uh, I'm excited as well about the new position. Um, and then the conversation came about, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's, it was always been about starting or, or who plays the most, but. The experience that you're receiving when you, when you play athletics and, or athletics or extracurricular in any form, uh, in middle school. So I think the, the social aspect, um, you know, the, the meeting new people and, you know, just something different. We start a little later, um, in this area, uh, so most of our programming doesn't start till seventh grade. Uh, so, um, you know, the social aspect, so I agree, uh, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do, um, in the district and hopefully this position and, and. The people that are in place, um, the coaches, I know, um, the high school athletic directors, uh, Dan Huff have done a wonderful job the last few years. Um, and, and I, I'm ready to see, uh, and be a part of, uh, the culture change, um, with athletics and extracurriculars. Um, in the, in the district, so excited as well.
Awesome. Jess?
Three items here, but one on James. With the rolling start dogs, I called something yesterday. So middle school, particularly incoming seventh grade parents. Even though your kid may not be in school, maybe already have practices starting for activities, athletics, so they may be there on those days ahead of time. This week, for families listening, it also means go ahead and get your forms, your physical forms, concussion forms, all that stuff that has been done ahead of time. Because now your kid will be sitting on a sideline or in the bleachers and you can get those sheets online, I think. Or you can probably stop by office and get them. And if you're having issues getting physical, I think Success Creek has some options as well and make sure you start now, because, you know, it's hard to get in on a late notice, so just, uh. If I have a rolling starter, by the two or three days there, you need to plan ahead also, had your kid there, or it's A.M. practice or P.M. practice, so. Uh, one of the logistical challenges of that, but, you know, we can overcome it. Uh, yeah, I had was also to our, as we get back closer to school with our, uh, families, we pick up, drop off stuff. We have a number of construction projects going on, a couple buildings that will be still going going as we're coming in. Uh, Central's got a lot of work going on there, as we come in ballgames there and drop off and same as, uh, Irving and stuff, so. Uh, be patient, be watchful, cause there may be more movement around and things that we may be used to park, you can't get to now. And I think we'll have a little patience and just flexibility will, will get through it, but, uh, we do have a lot of activity going on right down in the district, so.
Ospina, I just had one more announcement on, on an open house, uh, front. We do have an open house on Thursday for the career center from one to three and from five to seven. Um, and so if there's a family member or even a member of the community that wants to check it out, we're gonna have the staff there and answer some questions. And so people, you know, aren't meeting with their counselors, but they still have things they wanna talk about, they can show up to that, so. Um, and with that, um, the next time we'll be meeting will be in this room, um, August twenty-third. And so there being no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Aster and Jessie, all right, we've been seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tonight, be safe, we are adjourned. Beep.